And then lots of meetings about things like I will, things like the ICB. I'm assuming members are aware that the ICB is emerging to form a big ICB and that will have an impact on us as Biggleswade and as Central Bedfordshire Council. Hopefully at the next meeting they will give some more information. Bottom line is it's still being worked out, but it's actually they're merging at pace is the answer. So I think that actually will be important for us because as you know, we were very much top of the pile in terms of our health needs because of our really desperate health needs. Given that we're now part of a bigger pile, I'm very concerned that we will drop down that list and it's how we keep Biggleswade at the forefront of their minds when they're figuring out who gets what. So I think that's super duper important. And that's all from me really. Lots and lots of casework otherwise.
Thank you. councillor Watkins, did you indicate?
Yeah, I'm happy to give a couple of portfolio updates. I thought it'd be interesting to have a small update on Home Farm. It isn't much of an update. We anticipated that we'd be marketing between April and June this year. Now clearly that's been missed. That's because the legal and due diligence is still being worked on. There is a meeting of council officers in September, following which they'll make recommendations to myself and councillor Baker as the finance portfolio holder as to whether they believe we should go ahead at that stage. But of course, it remains very much a decision for members and I'll keep you all appraised of that. At London Road, there's been a lot of talk about London Road. It was floated as potentially an idea for part of the Ival Valley rebuild. And there's still services in place and the youth service, adult training centre, et cetera. So there needs to be a public consultation, but as it's something that councillor Tranter was keen on, if the youth service was ever to be re, to move from that site, we'd absolutely re-provide it elsewhere in town. Both he and councillor Owen have made a commitment to that effect. So I think that's something that we can, we can bank. A little bit more delicate because there are services on the side, but you're all aware that Preen are looking for a new home. So I have met twice with Cathy, once on the site and earlier today with the relevant director, Robert Ling. And I have, or I will task him tomorrow with looking at options as to how we might be able to work with them to use either a part or potentially of the whole of that site. Bearing in mind, we've got a three million pounds capital receipt, but I think there's a strong argument to be made, one way or the other, that we're washing our face. We're already committing tens of millions of pounds with Home Farms. So I think it's only fair that we have something on that site that would serve the residents of Biggleswade for many decades to come. Cathy's very enthusiastic and I think there's, there's an opportunity there to re-provide some of the other services. I know there's a question at council last week, which I was late back from an exam. So I apologise, I didn't get to answer your grant, but there's potentially an opportunity then to move some of those services out of Century House and bring some of the vision that you've been working on to life. So that's that. Leading on from London Road, there's a paper that officers are working on relating to meanwhile space, which I must confess did come about originally from a motion that the Liberal Democrats put forward at council. Meanwhile, space basically means the temporary use of vacant buildings awaiting development. So were there to be plucking out, say, a London Road vacant for some time, we're going to put a policy together as to how community groups, charities or businesses subject to certain conditions could make use of that space on a temporary, on a temporary basis. Usually would be offered at below market rent to make the space accessible. And it's understood by all parties that it would be on a temporary basis. Now, any conveyancer will tell you that that would fill them with fear potentially. So we have to make sure that we've, you know, got the law tied down, but it is absolutely possible to have it on a, on a licence basis. The only caveat is that we can't let people take the risk of going into buildings that aren't fit for purpose. We've had, not in Biggleswade, but some suggestion that artist group, for example, might be used to working in less than appropriate circumstances. And, you know, clearly that's not something that we can, we can take a risk on. The only other thing to mention is you'll be aware that there's a community governance review being undertaken. We, the last general purposes meeting, which I'm chairman, approved the establishment of the working group, which will have representative from each of the political groups. And I think unless I'm mistaken, you've had a meeting to discuss this already. So I would urge you to, to feedback and drop me a line directly if you've got any comments or questions on, on the process. That's it. Happy to ask any questions, answer any questions, but don't want to take up too much of your time. You've got a full agenda. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Watkins. Do we have any updates from the town council? councillor Russell?
Just quickly to say that on the community governance review, the town council has done a lot of work on this and hopes to finalise its submission to Central Beds at our August meeting. So we've had meetings with the surrounds, some of the surrounding parish councils. And we've had a public consultation. So we've gone through the needs of the process and will be submitting something in time for the August deadline. And if I could just raise two issues, which I know we've got Gary Powell talking to us and they're both sort of highways issues and I'm not expecting immediate answers, but I'm going to raise again my famous request for a traffic island in St Andrews Street near the roundabout at the bottom of the high street. It's still being used by lots of people who are less able and they desperately need some protection from the traffic. There is the formal request from the town council, which hasn't actually been formally answered by Central Bedfordshire yet. So we wait to see what comes of that. And the other issue I want to raise is a highways tree, the Wellingtonia tree in Shortmead Street, on the corner of Shortmead Street and Ival Gardens. We had a scare some time ago. There was a bit of a flurry on Facebook about that tree was going to be taken down. That proved to be not the case. And whether it was some sort of hoax or something, we never did get to the bottom of. But now two residents of Ival Gardens have spoken to somebody who was, in their words, assessing the tree and writing down notes. And he told them that it would have to come down because it was in danger of, well, it was actually knocking down the, the roots or disturbing the wall of the vicarage. So there's been a lot of to-ing and fro-ing and thank you to councillor Fage for taking it up quickly as well. Highways are very aware of it. They say how important the tree is. It's, it's important in terms of the county because there aren't many Wellingtonia trees. It's also important in terms of Biggleswade. They have no idea that anybody might be taking the tree down. I've talked to the church and the vicar and the church wardens that they have no idea that there might be any proposal to take the tree down from the church's point of view. It doesn't have a tree preservation order on it, but it is in the conservation area. And one of the Central Beds officers says it doesn't need a TPO because it's in the conservation area and that TPOs are hard to enforce when it's in a public space rather than a private space. So be it. But I am somewhat concerned that we've got a second go at that tree in just a few months and I don't know what's going on. So I'm just putting it on the table so that everybody knows about it. And if we hear anything about it, can we act? Because it is a specimen tree. It must be at least 150 years old. There aren't that many in the county. And it would, a lot of people would be very upset if it was taken down in any way. I'll leave it at that.
Right, thank you. We'll carry that one offline. I need to check my emails on that. But we, I think we need to press ahead with that TPO if we, if we can, because it's a belt and braces thing, in my view, conservation area and TPO. Just turn that microphone off, that's all right, please. Not you, Madeline, miss Bellwitts. Thank you. Yes, of course.
Can I just ask for an update on Abbott's Walk, please?
Can I ask one of our officers, Mr Campbell, to give an update on where we are with the improvements to Abbott's Walk, please?
Yeah, Ian.
Yeah, there's some progress. After quite a while, we've engaged with the agents for the landlords. We've got around to discussing colour codes for the paint. So I guess we're getting somewhere at last. That's about as much as I can tell you at the moment. But so they've been asking, asking me what we've got lined up for it. And I'm telling them it's all in the depot. They're asking us about paint colours and codes and coordination. When are they going to get some money from us? And the answer is as soon as the first paintbrush goes on the wall. So I think we're getting somewhere with them at long last. I'm quite encouraged that things are moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Sorry, this is chair, can I add in one other thing on that? Just follow us, Karim here. Apologies for not being there this evening.
Sorry.
Just on Abbott's Walk, yeah? Just a follow-up from what my colleague Ian has been saying. They've actually told us that they're aiming at early September for the decorators to start, start their work. So in terms of obviously colour palette and all the rest of it, that needs to be done first. Once they do start and they're making good progress with that work, we will then be able to kind of apply, as Ian's just said, the various items that we've procured for them, which include planters and signage, heritage signage up also.
Excellent, thank you. And pigeon repellent. Councillor Russell? Poisoned.
I just, I just think I ought to say that our town clerk has given his apologies for tonight and that Karim Hosseini, who we've just heard from, who is a deputy town clerk, is online because he can't be here for various reasons tonight. So he is there to support the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Karim. Yes, Paul?
Yeah, just to give everybody an update on the little things that I do on the ground. Had a lady contact me last year about, she'd come out of a hospital, hostel with some young children. She was given a CVC house, which was in very poor condition. So I got them moved out. And then the house was refitted, new kitchen, new bathroom, got rid of all the mould in the house. And then she moved back in. Just to give you a picture, she's actually changed her name and all this was in confidence for me. And she's over the moon because she's got a house that she can live in with young children and she's got a good family now. So as a complete contrast, I got the inspiration from you actually, Grant, last year. You had some secretaries, if I remember. It might have been a bit longer. But anyway, so because the common footpaths on the common become overgrown and of course people couldn't walk down the footpaths, you know, and the junctions with the gates, et cetera. So I just put a post on Facebook and obviously I've got some negativity, but a lot of people said, brilliant idea. I said, well, it's good for your mental health going out with your secretaries, take your dog for a walk and do a sniffing a few nettles and brambles. And I've got quite a following now. You see how clear they are because it's a few people going around trimming up the gates and stuff like and keeping it tidy. So I think that was something positive as well. So there you go.
Good work. I'll see you in the path that leads alongside the railway. Bring up might need more than secretaries. But was it done yesterday? Excellent. I don't walk that way anymore. It's a bit, it's a bit prickly. So, okay. Is that all from CBC and Town Council updates? Thank you for that, everybody. Item nine, minutes of previous meeting. So we have two sets of minutes from, we'll start with 15th of October, then we'll move on to the 16th of January. So 15th of October, we'll go through four. We're doing accuracy, then we'll do matters arising. So we'll do accuracy first. So page eight, page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13. I'd like to raise on page 13, 15A, we have to say who's been co-opted, please. I think that needs to be included in the minutes. If we were co-opting a town councillor to the town council, as I was back in 2017, we'd absolutely have that in the minute. So we need to be saying in these minutes, who's being co-opted, please. So I'd ask that that's updated, please. Other than that, are we comfortable that these are a fair record? Is that okay? Yep, I'm not seeing any dissent. Moving on to 16th of January, so I'm on page 15. Again, we're going through for accuracy. So page 15, 16, 17, 18 and 19. No. So we're happy that these are accurate. Happy with that? Yep. Not seeing any dissent. Excellent. So now matters arising. So this is item 10 of the agenda. So minutes from the town council meeting 15th of October. So matters arising. I'm on page eight. Any matters arising? Page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13. No matters arising. Perfect. And now on to the meeting of the 16th of January. Again, we're doing matters arising. So page 15, page 16, page 17. Councillor Russell?
Do we know whether we're going to get anybody from the Salamanca Group to come and address the joint committee? I don't know whether officers are still trying, but I think we ought to invite again for October.
Yes, let's minute that if that's okay, please. They can't come before October. It's possible that we'll be into more detailed discussions around the call for sites then potentially. So that might be a good time for them to join us.
Mr Chair, can I just, sorry, just add to that. Yes, that's actually, thanks. In answer to councillor Russell's question, yes, we've had a response from the ladies who spearheads the project from Salamanca Group and she would be happy to come along in October to the October meeting.
Perfect.
Ladies Esther?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Anything else on page 17? No. Any matters arising, page 18? And matters arising, page 19? No. So we'll move on then. Item 11, outstanding actions for members to receive and consider the action log and ongoing issues list. So I think we're on page 22 of our packs. Does anyone have any comments? Everything's done as far as I can tell. Any comments on the ongoing outstanding actions? No, we note it. We note this. Thank you. Item 12, invited speakers. 12A, Central Bedfordshire Council's Assistant Director of Highways, Gary Powell, present via Zoom. So I can see, well, I can't see Gary, but I know he's behind me. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I must say, I haven't sort of prepared a presentation as such. I'm aware that I originally was invited along to the meeting in April, following a number of discussions, I think, at the joint committee, the request that I come along and answer questions on some of the concerns that have been raised. I can sort of give a few quick updates in terms of some of the stuff that's been happening around highways recently. We had the freight strategy was agreed by executive back in June. And now that is adopted by the council. We've also recently presented the road safety policy to the overview and scrutiny committee, which was fully endorsed. And that will be going to executive in August for any comments they may have. And then hopefully that will be endorsed by the council as well. Apart from that, Chair, I'm at your disposal for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, for that comprehensive update. Does anyone have any questions for Gary, head of highways? I think we had one a moment ago, if I might just kick off about the plan for next year. Is it worth just talking briefly to some of those timelines, Gary? Because obviously we have financial planning which happens at Central Beds and we'll start to get a view of what might be in scope for highways improvements over the next sort of 12, 18 months. What does that timeline look like from your, your team's perspective? Just so that we can think about how we might feed into that.
Yeah, certainly. As, as you said, as you're aware, the, the sort of MTFP processes has now already started. We're starting to look at what budgets are, what they're likely to be for next year. We have had some announcements from government about future grants over the next three years for the, what was the Integrated Transport Grant is now called, I think it's the Transport Grant. And that will be increasing, not hugely, but will be increasing over the next three to four years. What we haven't had yet from government is their indication of what the maintenance block will be, which obviously impacts greatly on in terms of the, you know, the day to day. Or so, so I should say that the resurfacing work that we do, surface dressing, all the maintenance work that we do as a highway service. Linked to that obviously is then the, the funding that the council also puts forward because we do put forward additional funding on top of the grants that we get from government. And so that process will be going through the usual, as you say, the usual rounds, going to the overview and scrutinies, I think in the autumn, then out consultation and then agreed at full council in February. So in line with that or adjacent to that, we start looking at what works we're going to be doing next year with hopefully some idea of what this sort of budget might start to look like. But we cannot confirm everything until obviously full council and our budgets are fully confirmed. So we start that process now, really in August. We will start looking at all the data that we have, considering all the feedback, feedback that we've had to date, you know, data around condition surveys, what we call SCREAM and scanner, which is about, you know, what's the skid resistance of surfaces, those types of things. We also do or have done quite a lot of work in terms of the road safety side with collision analysis as well, which helps inform future programmes. And all of that will be brought together. And then I think councillor Whitaker mentioned earlier that we're now looking at, okay, how normally we would come and do some sort of member engagement in, in October, November time, looking at, okay, this is what we, this is what we have. This is what the data is telling us in terms of the maintenance and the improvements that we need to bring forward. What feedback do you have on that? What, what are you hearing as local ward members? And additionally, this year we have, we've been talking about, okay, how do we involve, how do we involve town councils or the job opportunities potentially? So we're thinking about that at the moment. It's quite apt that we have an evaluation. Be interested in your thoughts on that. Obviously, once we get our feedback in October, we then start to certify our programme. Then we're looking to, once the budgets are confirmed and programmed, we'll then produce the final programme for that year, for the next year, sorry. And we then look to publish that in April. For this year, for the first time, what we actually did was not just do an annual plan, we're looking at a three-year programme. So we're looking at a longer term view of what we're going to do over a period of time. That's not steadfast. It doesn't mean that that is it. This is all we're doing. The idea of having that longer programme is that we can be more flexible and that if we get, say, for instance, if we get more funding, we can, we can flex and we can do more in year. If we don't, we can make sure that things are carried forward. And then we've always got that plan. We're always refreshing that plan each year. As soon as we get new data, each year we look at the data again and see what the condition is at that time. Is that, so good, Chair?
Thank you. No, that's perfect. It sounds like if we were to come up with some suggestions at joint committee in October then, that that would potentially be quite timely and fit with those, fit with those timelines. Questions? Councillor Russell was first and councillor Whitaker?
You talked about the October meeting and yes, it might be good. But I wonder if Mr Powell can share with the joint committee the data that he was talking about, because it would be very interesting for us to know what the data are for our town and what the issues are. And I want to mention something that's very important for Biggleswade and that's the whole business of bus circulation. We've been talking about this with people from highways for three years that I know of. We've got the new transport interchange. There are issues for the bus operators about why they may or may not want to use the bus interchange. But for us, the main issue is getting the buses off of the market square, getting rid of the bus exit lane, which isn't ideal because when buses turn right up the high street, they overhang the pavement, which has never been good. But we want to say, I mean, one of the things we've got on the agenda is our market square vision. Well, we can't go too far ahead with that until we know what's happening with the buses. So there needs to be some proper identification of where it might be possible for buses to, for bus stops to be in the high street. And then if buses do need to lay over, then they must use the transport interchange. So, you know, that, that is really a priority for Biggleswade. And I'd ask Mr Powell if he could note that for us, please. And finally, I'll come back to what I said earlier, you know, safety, road safety and a traffic island in St Andrews Street. But certainly it's the buses that are the main issue for Biggleswade Town Council at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just take a comment from Hayley, Gary, and then we'll, you can address some of those points. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Grant. Just to say, I think there was 5,000 in the annual plan for the, for the bus layover, for the bus stops in the high streets to do a feasibility, Gary. And I don't think it ever happened. It didn't happen last year and the money was there last year. So I don't know what the plan is for doing it this year. A couple of questions for me. One is particularly in the town centre, but not exclusively, we do have an issue with manhole covers, town centre and actually up by the retail park as well. Now, I know some of them won't be ours, as in terms of CBC, they belong to the utilities. Some of them will be ours. But they are, we seem to be on a never ending cycle of trying to get them repaired and fixed. I know the high street is closing for a few days to do some of the ones in the high street. It seems a very inefficient way at the moment for residents to report problems or even for us to report problems, trying to figure out who owns what and then trying to chase down underwater or whoever the owner is. Is, are we missing something here, Gary? Is there, is there a way that we can streamline that process? Because it is those high traffic areas that seem to be the problem. So that's the first one. So manhole covers. And then the second one is just about the sustainable transport corridor. So, I mean, we're probably talking a couple of years ago, two, three years ago?
Six years ago, yeah.
I can remember going on a very hot walk with Steve Lakin all along the sustainable transport corridor and back again, that was planned from Land East. And obviously that, that project, the Land East project will hopefully come forward, you know, at some point over the next few years. But that, that investment was made in terms of scoping out where that could go and how that could go forward. Where are we with that? Are we waiting on Land East to do something so that we get more, you know, more grant funding or more money from government to make it happen or from the developer to make it happen? Or is it something we're not interested in as a town, as a, as a council, as a CBC anymore? Or is it been absorbed into the LC whip? Or where, where are we? Because I'm just a bit lost with it.
Thank you. So there was four things there, Gary. So firstly, so councillor Whitaker's two points about manhole covers and the sustainable transport corridor and then visibility of Central Beds' data on our highways and buses, particularly the bus exit lane in Biggleswade. Do you want to comment on, on any of those briefly?
I can try, yes. I mean, in, in terms of the data, the sort of data that we're talking about is huge. You know, it's not, it's not something that is easily shared. What we can share and we do have is a list of, of which roads are requiring attention and where they sort of rank in order. So that's something we can certainly share with you once we've done the sort of data analysis for this year. We talked about buses. Obviously highways will work with our transport colleagues and the buses. I haven't got enough information to be able to answer that fully. But again, if you, if you, if you want to send me an email about that, I can pick that up with my colleagues in transport and see where we are with the, with the current position or situation. You also mentioned councillor the, the sort of road safety side of things as well and your request for, I think, a crossing point or a traffic island, I think. And I can't remember the location. But if, again, if you want to send me that, if you want to send me an email about the detail of that, I'll find out where that is and I'll, I'll give you a response to that. We talked about, I did talk about road safety earlier, a little bit about the road safety policy. And one of the things I'll say for, for some context here is that if you have a look at the draft policy, which will be considered by executive in August, it talks about our approach to road safety. It talks about the collision analysis that we've done and where we have cluster sites across the, the whole of the area. And we have, you know, when we did the analysis, we've got 40 odd sites across the whole of Central Bedfordshire where we have multiple accidents. And what we have done is then look at that and drill that down to about a list of about 20, where we've got causation, that we understand as common causation of those accidents and the stuff that we can do. And that is the focus in terms of the team, when we talk about road safety. That's what we're going to be focusing on over the next couple of years is addressing those cluster sites. And that doesn't, you know, mean that we won't be doing some of the smaller things and, you know, other requests, but it will be the main focus for our funding, I think, over the next few years to make sure that we are tackling those areas, which obviously is, you know, is important to everybody. Anyone that's using their network, we need to make it as safe as possible. Manhole covers. I don't think there's any easy answer, councillor Whitaker. It is, like you say, we go around the circle sometimes. It depends who they belong to. If they're, if they're ours, then we should be dealing with them. If they're not, then we have to pass them over to the utility company. They're not our responsibility. They're not our responsibility, but depending on where they are, if they're high traffic, then generally they need. A bit more of a sort of robust construction around them to make them, to stop them from making noise when people go over them. But again, if you've got particular examples, I'm more than happy to try and pick that up for you and see if we can do something. The sustainable transport corridor. I'm not fully sighted on that. I'm not sure where we are. Obviously, the LC whips have come in since then. We, we will be going to September OSC with the rural at LC whips. To, to add on to the whole network. We've already got the urban ones that have been agreed. And again, so that, that is quite a lot of the focus of the sustainability team, sustainable transport team to, to bring forward the LC whip. Programme over a number of years. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's massive. It's something that's going to take a very long time to deliver. Again, if, if you want to send more details, councillor Whitaker, I'll find a response for you. I can't answer it this evening, I'm afraid.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a couple of last questions from two councillors. So councillor Thomas and councillor Albin. We'll take you in turn.
Hi, Gary. The crossing that councillor Russell's mentioned is at the bottom, or the top of the high street, the bottom of the high street, whatever you like to call it. It's off a roundabout and what you're not getting is accidents, but you're getting a lot of near misses. I'm not down there very often, but quite often there's, there's, there's near misses. So they won't come up on your data because they're not accidents, they're not reported. But I know from having done health and safety, near misses should be reported and should be taken into account because they become accidents. I personally, as a reasonably fit person, am not too happy about crossing there. I go a long way around to try and avoid it. But sometimes, you know, you can't, you can't do anything but cross there. So it's, it's worth a look. I mean, Madeline's raised it for a reason. And there is a, an issue with the road because it's not just one road going under the roundabout from, coming into town. People treat it as two. And they, and they overtake and that's where the near, the near misses occur. There is a little bit of paint on the road. So it used to be. I don't know what you would call it, a fake island, if you like. It just needs to be a physical island so people could get to it as a safer route and then, then go across, like it is on the other side. So it's, it's, it's a good island and a good crossing on, on the opposite side of the roundabout. But it's, it's missing on the, the left hand side.
I think if we take this as a formal item in October to come up with a proper list for Biggleswade and really prioritise, we can start giving this the attention it deserves. Yeah, I, I agree. I tend to not chance it, crossing there. Sometimes I feel a bit brave when I'm coming back the other direction for some reason, but councillor Albin.
Yeah, in, in terms of looking at this list, it would be good to get it to the town council. Prior to the October Joint Committee meeting if possible, so that they can get more opportunity to, to feed into it. It may be that's already in hand, but it would be good to consider it at the town council first.
Yeah, could, could we minute this then, please? So I think the action is to receive the prioritisation list. So Central Beds' initial view, even if that's very much not final and subject to consultation. Then hopefully bring this to town council in October and then Joint Committee in the second half of October, if we're. Twenty third of October, something like that, our meeting. If that sequencing works with Central Beds, works with the town council and works with this Joint Committee, then that seems like a sensible action. So is that okay? Councillor Barrett?
Can we just make sure that this just happens anyway? I mean, it must have happened last year that we went through this planning exercise and a list was produced of the planned things for Biggleswade. So it would be nice to have that just put into process so that it happens on a regular basis every year. We don't have to ask for it every year.
No, that's okay. Just to, just to provide some context there. So a motion actually came to Central Beds Council. In my first year, saying that councillors should have more involvement than just the database approach. We're now in year two of that. Last time we had some input as ward councillors. But we were perhaps a little bit late to the party with involving this Joint Committee and town councillors, but we're well in time for that this year. So I think if that timeline works, let's do it this year and then repeat it every year. I agree with you there. Are there any last questions? Councillor Whitaker?
Sorry, Gary, in terms of road safety, you mentioned obviously the hotspots. I would say in Biggleswade, one of our biggest hotspots is the junction of Chambers Way with London Road. It, it has a lot of accidents. It has, it's had fatalities in the past. It's had serious accidents. Unfortunately, there's probably one quite nasty accident a year, I would say there. And it's a busy junction and there are some kind of straightforward things we could do to make it a bit better. But I'm conscious that when the Land East outline application came forward, that junction was very contentious about what they could do to improve it. And there was talk of roundabouts, lights, all sorts of things that all kind of were dismissed as not being feasible for that location. So it's a dangerous junction that's not easy to remedy, is the answer, really. So I'm just wondering how much there is an interaction with planning to make sure that if we're going to do something at that junction, if that's in your top. Forty or your top twenty. If, if we are going to do something with that junction, that actually we, we get the input from the section 106. That is probably, well, it is, they're going to give us some section 106 to try and address that junction. So. What's the interaction between highways and planning to make sure that we're not paying for that in another way when it could come out of S106?
Gary?
Okay. Can, can I just, shall we go back to the first point around? We're talking about near misses.
Yep.
Just to take on that, or just to address that. Yeah, I, I do appreciate what's being said there about near misses. Unfortunately, we have. A large number of accidents across the, you know, the whole area that are recorded, that are either slight, serious or fatal in some cases. And the simple fact is we don't have enough funding to deal with all of those areas. So whilst I appreciate near misses can be, can be, you know. Can then potentially lead to accidents happening. What we have to do really is address the accidents that we know are occurring and, you know, where we have clusters of those accidents. Sometimes it's not about the road. I'll just point that out as well. You know, sometimes, and, and again, unfortunately, with a lot of fatalities, people automatically talk about the road. And think it's the road that's at fault. Ninety percent of the time, it's not the road. It's the people, I'm afraid. It's, it's, it's somebody has made a mistake. And we have to think about that each time we look to, what, what do we need to do to address these accidents, you know, across our network? In some cases, it might be that we, we actually don't need to do something physically to the road, but that we have to try and raise awareness or we have to do something around behaviour. And behaviour is a real key there. But having said that, you know, we don't discount these things. The, the, the smaller sort of stuff that we're talking about. Where you've got things like crossings, we can consider those. And sometimes that's more about, as much about accessibility. As it is about road safety. And so then we can deal with it in a different way. But again, you know, we have limited funding for all of these things that people would like to see. So we have to try and prioritise those things. Going back to the point about planning and highways. I think councillor Whitaker, you probably know that the development management team that used to sit in planning, they're the highways development management team. Now sit in highways. Okay, so we, we needed to, in my view, just split those across so that. They are very much now responding from a highways perspective and they sit now in the traffic management team. Now, within that team as well, you've got road safety. And you've got the highway agreements team and you've got the sustainable transport team. So I've brought together all of the, the sort of right people to try and influence what our response is to planning applications that come forward. So that we are thinking more about what do we need to do in terms of sustainable transport? What do we need to do in terms of road safety? And I quite often I've seen where, you know, the, the developer has just put forward that we need. You know, some sort of traffic car, some speed humps or whatever. And that might be okay. That might be appropriate and maybe what's needed, but sometimes it's not. So again, with the analysis we've done, as you said, we can then look at, okay, what is the analysis telling us about a particular junction? Somewhere near to the development, let's bring forward that. And what we're doing at the moment is the sort of, the, the top ten or so of the list. We're doing feasibility studies and we're going to do some outline and then detailed design for each of those. We may not be able to afford to tackle all of those with our budgets, but at least we've then got something that's in the draw. That when a developer comes along, we can say this is what we need. Yeah, so we, we're very much now linked into the planning process.
Thank you. We'll take one last comment and then I'm going to move on. Councillor Russell?
It was just crossing my mind that there may well be section 106 money meant for the town centre. Is that possible to move it towards something like that traffic island with highways or? Is it restricted in some way?
It, it, I'm sorry, just quickly respond. The, 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 the simple answer is it depends. And it depends on what the section 106 says. And again, that's something we're trying to address as well is that if, if we've got smaller developments and we can, you know, you can't necessarily. It always depends on the size of development, the impact of the development. We can't ask them all to do lots of things for us. It's got to be proportionate to the impact of that development. But again, if, if we, if we can get some money from them that is then labelled in the right way and can be kept to one side. And when we've got enough of that money, we can do something more meaningful. So the section 106 money that's there now, it will just depend on what it's been, what, what it's been labelled as to, you know, what, what, what it's there to address. We can't always just use it for whatever we want.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you ever so much for joining, Gary. We look forward to being back in contact, probably post October, when we'll have a nice shopping list of items. For the, for the next financial year. So thank you ever so much for your time and for, for sharing your insights with us.
No problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All the best. Item 12B, Community Safety Group, Carol Burtwhistle, you wish to address the committee on this item. I think we have some papers in front of us. So would you like to speak to this?
This has come from our discussions at our committee. And the work that my colleague here, Alex, is one of our street watch volunteers. So he, he observes dangerous situations. When he's out, out patrolling, we raise them on Fix My Street and try and report them that way. And quite often, they just close them without any action taking place. So I think that there was a, a figure of, what's it, three, eight thousand nine hundred and three. Fix my street reports outstanding for Central Beds in, that was quoted in the minutes for the, on page seventeen of the papers. So do we know how many of those have actually been resolved and how many of them are still open?
I don't have that figure to hand. We, we can find, do you want to just put your proposal to the committee? Is that helpful?
Yeah, I mean, basically. Th- these issues, some can be related to streets, some can be related to waste, waste from businesses that is just left. In locations, making, making a mess. We've seen issues such as. We've got the, sorry. So where we've seen damage graffiti was, was, was a, the big, big thing where we know, from talking to Ian, that there have been challenges. With different sites. Who owns the site? Who's responsible for it? Is it utility cabinet? Is it a railway installation? Is it the, is the owner of the property of, of a wall responsible for that, for their wall? And I know Ian said that there's some residents don't want the graffiti removed from their walls because they're worried that worse will follow. Because inevitably, when they see a plain wall. It just, there's an open invitation to put more graffiti on there. So we, it would be lovely if we could break that cycle, but. I, you know, I think that's beyond the, the scope of our group, but we want to look at how we can direct action. To take on tasks to improve the town. So graffiti could be one example. Weeds, tackling, abandoned vehicles, making sure those get reported. Weapons sweeps that we do with the police, for example, making sure that, you know, areas are as safe as possible. And. The, and the example I gave in the paper of Hitchmead Street, where we've got that. Long area of grass next to the school, which gets mown, but there are loads of tin cans in it. So there's fractures, shards of tin cans spread across the road from that mowing operation. So ideally, we would like the contractor, who is taking the responsibility for mowing that grass, to. Be responsible for clearing up the litter before they do the, the mowing. Not sure who can, who, who is the contractor responsible there. It could be. Central Beds or it could be town council, I'm not sure.
Probably the school. If it's owned by the school. Can I, can I just ask then, so what, what are you asking from us? Is this, so I know in the paper we have suggestions around if you. Whether your group or another group were to do a litter pick. So one of the gaps then would be how do you dispose of the waste? So is it building a partnership like that?
Yeah, and it's thinking about what do we need for graffiti? We could use graffiti wipes, but we need to do risk assessments. To test what chemicals are needed for each intervention. So we, we need to sort of a pre-visit to check what would work and then to. Bring the right supplies to clear the graffiti.
Okay.
And then deal with, do we need to wash the site? Do we need just chemicals? How do we dispose, how can we safely dispose of the, the wipes of chemicals, for example? There are graffiti wipes that we've been told the railway team use. That we could, you know, we could purchase some with a grant and, and try and. Take responsibility for, you know, a, a set area at each of our sessions.
Okay, so your group would like to be able to do more in the town to keep it clean and tidy, but you're finding. Certain constraints and you're hoping we can help you overcome some of those. Is that the crux of this?
Yeah, so, so it's really, who's responsible for, if, if we, if we come up with an area, who's responsible for it and, you know, developer.
Okay.
Utility company.
My suggestion, so I'll come to Ian in a moment. I think the suggestion here would be. To tackle this one bit at a time, because that is one of the big challenges we have. Councillor Whitaker was alluding to it a moment ago with. Manhole covers, for example, who owns what? Who owns which wall? Who owns which part of our, each and every bit of our town? So that is probably one of the obstacles. Ian, have you been in conversations about this? Then I'll open to the floor.
Thank you. Yes, I've been working with Carol for quite some time on this. I had a guy came to me some time ago. Saying I want to do something to direct action about graffiti. So I put him in touch with the Community Safety Group and with Carol. And we started investigating what we can do about it. And of course, the more you investigate it, the deeper and deeper you get into it and the more and more complicated it becomes. So there were no quick fix solutions. One idea was to, and still remains, is to get some sort of glorified culture pressure washer sort of thing. The council already has one, but there, there was a. A better one on the market. That would be about £2,000. That's about the size you could put in for a grant application to get one of those. But the questions there then are, how do you move it around? Where is it stored? Chemicals, cosh regulations, people being trained, having protective PPE and all the rest of it. So what seems like an obvious thing to do becomes more and more difficult. And as Carol said, not everyone wants their walls cleaned. And you have to identify who owns the wall. You can't just go around randomly removing graffiti from other people's property. So we're on the case, we're collaborating, we're working on it, but we are also aware of the fact that it's a more complex issue than it first appears.
Thank you, Ian. Comments, councillors? Gary? Councillor Barrett?
Yeah, reading through the paper, I mean, one of the things in here is that. I think Carol's a little bit worried that sometimes they do arrive, potentially arrive to, to help with something. Only to find that someone else has already been contracted to do that work. So I think by very nature of the sort of work they do, there's a lot of duplication in what they do. But what they're trying to do is fix problems where those who are responsible for it aren't. Able to because of financial constraints or haven't yet got to be able to do it. So I think that's some of the points that are in this paper here. So I think one of the things that we, we could be doing is to help Carol's organisation. To understand where it is she should be contacting and who she is, she should be talking to. And I think that's what she's trying to get to in her paper, if you read through it. So it's not about us necessarily in this, this room trying to solve her problems. It's someone to help her to navigate. Through all of those areas and that may be someone at Central Beds, that may be indeed be at BTC. But I think that's what the main thrust of the paper is. Otherwise, we'll end up trying to solve all the problems ourselves and become yet another layer. Sitting on top of the Community Safety Group.
Thank you. No, that's a good point. We're not just going to be another layer. No way. Councillor Whitaker?
I think figuring out who owns what is complicated and I think. As much as it would be great to give you somebody that could tell you, we would end up doing exactly what. What you need to do, because we all just do the same thing. If it's a grid, if it's a, we go and stand and look at it and see what it says on the front. You kind of get to learn what CBC stuff looks like, I hate to say it, where it is in the town. And so it comes through experience. So it may just be a thing where you need somebody to help you initially, but actually you will pick it up fairly quickly. Just a few of the things that you did raise, waste. Um. Just a few of the things that you did raise, waste, I think, and I know the areas you're talking about for waste. Um. And I think I've raised this before about particularly business-related waste. Um. Public Protection are very much involved with that, those issues at the moment. The problem being that they go and visit the site, fairly regularly, sites very regularly. Um. When they go, it's either not that bad or it's the day before the bins are being collected and then it's reasonable to have your waste out the day before. So what I've said to residents and I'm sure I've said it to you is, if you see evidence of lots of rubbish and it's like, you know, the bins were collected yesterday, send me pictures, send public protection pictures, because that's what they need is the evidence really to support what we're saying. And because at the moment, they simply don't have the evidence. Um. In terms of the 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 verge, you were saying about the shards of, I have been victim of that and my dog walking on it and and ending up with a nice hefty vet spill. So I totally understand what you're saying. And it happens everywhere. So we can't ask, I don't think, the contractor to litter pick before they start. But what I've, what I think is reasonable to ask is to ask for the schedule of when the grass is going to be mown. And then we got our our litter pickers, you know, around Biggles Way that we know are happy to go out and pick. So maybe we can ask them if we know there are key areas, maybe we can ask them to focus on the areas we know are about to be mown, you know, the week or two before and clear up the most of it. Um. Because that's what I try and do. Me, I try and get out before they get there and get the worst of it. So to try and avoid another vet spill. Um. So I totally get that. And then graffiti, I agree cleaning it up is a is a problem. And you've just mentioned all of the issues we're trying to clean up. But I also think, you know, trying to remember what I was like when I was younger, quite a while ago now. Some of our young people don't do it maliciously. It's it's a creative outlet for them. And I think it's really dangerous to remove or to not have an opportunity or wipe that away without giving them somewhere else to do it, because as you say, it will just come back. So I think as well as looking at how to remove it, we also have to think about giving our young people a space to do it in a more positive, creative way that will actually add something to the town rather than detract from it. And that's a place question really, and how and where. I mean, the skate park seemed like an obvious place, but but, you know, I think we have to provide an alternative opportunity and then take away the things that we don't want, rather than just hitting them with a stick.
We used to have a graffiti wall at the lakes, actually, when I was younger. Yeah. 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 Okay. Um. councillor Thomas?
Yeah, on the graffiti side of things, I'm involved in the gardening group. I didn't know this was going to come up. But we we've got a bid for the wall next to the station, which has got most of the graffiti on it. And it is spreading rapidly because I keep taking pictures and I see it around town. And we, one of our ideas is to cover the wall. And we've actually retracted it back from that a little bit and thought, well, we'll give them some of the wall to play with and we'll do the rest. And we get them to be creative and part of the bid was to try and get these people involved. Finding them's hard. We found that we've still got an idea of one or two, but and we've got another graffiti artist. We happened to bump into, believe it or not, while we're measuring up the wall. And he said, oh, I could fill that with something that as a starter that would encourage them to do something decent rather than just spraying their names on it.
Can I can I just bring us back then? So I think I think we've got a lot of sensible suggestions here. May I make one which maybe is sensible, maybe is not? Perhaps if we looked at two or three longstanding issues, things that we know are not going to get done, because if they were going to get done, they'd have been done by now. If your group were to pick maybe two or three and we were perhaps to treat them as a pilot involving Central Beds councillors, town councillors and and town council officers, perhaps between us, we can find ways of just navigating for those two or three, see how that works and then see if we can build a little bit from there. Because I I do understand your frustration. It is hard to navigate sometimes knowing what you can and can't do, what's legal and what's not. And this looks like a good initiative. You just need perhaps a little bit of support with one or two projects, see how that might operate in practice and then if there's space to build, let's do it. Does that seem reasonable? Councillor Russell, did you want to comment?
I think what you're saying is reasonable, but I think one of the things that the town council needs to do is to go through this list, because some of the issues here are town council responsibilities. And we actually do carry out those responsibilities. We regularly inspect all the play equipment that we look after. Nobody else needs to do it. We're complying with all the health and safety regulations. There are other things here that are ours. And I think the first thing we need to do is to help the community task force to um understand what they don't need to be looking at. Even if you see something wrong, at some point, it will get put right. And we've got, we've got more capability in the public realm team than we did even a year ago in looking after some of the the equipment and other things that we've got. And many of the benches in the town are ours, picnic tables are ours on places like the splash. Some of the planters are ours. We look after them, we plant them, you know, all of that. Then the community safety team don't need to think about. And so I think um one of the actions for the town council from this is to identify from this list all that we're responsible for, that others don't need to worry about.
No, that's a good suggestion. Okay, so shall we, should we take that as an action then on this item? Perhaps if you were to come up with, if the town council wants to whittle down this list first, I think that's okay. If you were to come up with, say, six, and then with the help of the town council, maybe get that down to two or three, do a pilot, you you're welcome to involve me and I'm sure other ward councillors on on that email. And between us, let's let's see if we can make this work with with you guys putting in the effort to do it, but with us helping you navigate. Does that seem like a reasonable action for that item? Is that helpful? Please.
We we're planning a volunteering recruitment activity. It's the sixth of September, which is Saturday, at the at the big theatre in the in the theatre area. And we're going to try and encourage groups from across Biggles Way who are seeking volunteers to to sort of put their wares out and and encourage people from across the town to look at the volunteer volunteering opportunities that are available and to, you know, encourage them to sign up.
Yeah, please.
Just as well, I'm just looking at Sarah. I'm just thinking about our community payback scheme as well, which we used to great effect um on the footpath between Eagle Farm Road and and the King's Reach Estate. It was good. It was really effective. So I'm just wondering from a Central Beds perspective, how how we can tap into that more to to help with our volunteer groups.
Sarah?
Yeah, I I can certainly follow that up um with the with the relevant team. I was, if I may, just going to pick up on your point about the volunteering day on the sixth of September. I hope you're in touch with Community and Voluntary Service, who are grant funded by ourselves to run the volunteer centre. So I know they would be delighted because it is, they have been trying to do some more work in Biggles Way. So um if you haven't got their contact details, I'll have to
No, they're on board.
Thank you.
I will look into the other.
Okay, so we have an action there on the Central Beds side as well. And then on the town council side, helping to whittle down that list to a couple of pilots. And then let's try to tackle them together and find a way, a model that works. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think one sort of area that would be useful is the sort of frequency of activities. So we're saying maintenance, we have things like no mow May that impact on when things are mown and hedge trimming, you can't cut when birds are nesting and so on. But if there was a understanding of how frequently maintenance activities were taking place, you know, is it a fortnightly, three weekly, six monthly?
That's more likely, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's the frequency, I think.
It is for CBC. Most of it is is two cuts a year now. Most of it, yeah. Um. Okay, we can't boil the ocean here. Look, there's a huge amount. And I'd rather we do a couple of things well and empower you to have an impact. And hopefully, if we can get some of that off the ground ahead of your recruitment event on the sixth, please send any contact or public, anything that publicises that. You send it to the town council and to to ward council as well. And we'll use what channels we have available to us to try to get a few people along to that. Is that okay? Thank you. Lovely. Last point, please.
Uh. Yes, just wanted to comment that working with councillor Thomas and especially with his good lady wife, um we're putting together a funding application at the moment for murals and mosaics to cover some of those walls before somebody else does.
Excellent. Get all the jam off of it. You all know what I'm talking about there. Thank you. That's one common word I keep seeing graffiti around the town. Thank you. No, that was very useful. Um. I'm going to move on then to item thirteen, which is the licensing policy consultation. So let me introduce this. Do we have an officer on for this? I can't remember. Oh, yes, we do. Hello.
Hi. Good evening.
Hello, hello. Um. So this is for members to receive and consider the licensing, licensing policy consultation. So do we, would you like to introduce and then we will, we will open up to the floor?
Um. Yeah, so just just to make you aware, you, obviously, the consultation is online on our website. Um. But we're we're trying to make as many interested parties aware as possible that we are consulting on an updated licensing policy. In short, the policy is has been updated to sort of make it more of a guide to applicants to provide more information about the types of things they need to consider when they're applying for a licence. Um. And just clarifying some information that become perhaps frequent um questions um by putting them in the policy. So it's clear what we're looking for from from applicants or explaining, you know, giving things in more detail. There's some specific additional sections on outdoor events and shisha and, you know, using outdoor spaces. Um. And so just clarifying some information about the conditions that we would like to see in applications, including giving some suggested conditions and the sorts of things that say applicants need to consider when they they put their application in. Because um it's sort of, you know, obviously much better if if people get it right when they initially apply than us having to retrospectively deal with any problems that arise from licensed premises. So we we want to support businesses um but make it clear what's what's required in new policy. And I say, we really welcome any feedback on on what we've done with the update.
Thank you, Jo. Let me open up for comments from councillors. So I think the purpose of this item, so this is, this is the licensing of businesses, premises, et cetera. The the opportunity here is either to provide feedback directly or if we wish, I think we can make recommendations that could feature in the Licensing Committee papers if if officers and the committee chairman are happy to to accept those. And, you know, that would just be part of normal consultation feedback, but that would give some visibility on behalf of Biggles Way. So does any member wish to provide any comment on this? Haley?
Hi, Jo. Um. I think from both a member and a member of the public perspective, um and you'll know, you'll know what I'm talking about when I say this. I think I I the licensing, I think, policy is pretty straightforward. But I think for me, the issue is about how it's enforced and things like requesting a licence review and things like that, how transparent that is for town council, but also for members of the public. I'd like to see it as really, really clearly set out so that if I was a member of the public and I wasn't happy with any licensed activity, that I would know exactly what I had to do and where I had to go. And and also that there will be, I want to say, not just a receipt of my complaint or my concern, but that there will be an obvious feedback mechanism to that. Because I think at the moment, we don't necessarily always close the loop because we get a lot of complaints. So how do we do that? How do we have, how do we address that within the policy so that residents don't feel they're just talking into a void or reporting into a void?
Okay, Jo, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, of course. Uh. Thank you, Hayley. I mean, yeah, there there's there's potentially two issues there. One, one is about service standards and our response times to to emails, um which is something we're we're aware of and are looking to address and improve. And I think that's a sort of separate to the fact that, yeah, making it clear um how people can call for a review, the grounds for calling for a review. Um. We have, for the first time, put some guidance, including the form that's needed to be completed um for anyone to call for a review outside being a responsible authority. So obviously, responsible authorities of the police and the fire service, environmental health trade standards, et cetera. But interested parties, and that could be anyone really, can can call for a review. Um. So the um the form is being included as an appendix and there's some information on on the process. But, you know, that's something we can look at in terms of, you know, whether there's more information we could potentially put in there as part of the consultation. Um. And, yeah, I think it's sort of understanding what the process is. Yeah, so so because it is, it is, um it is difficult to to navigate potentially for for members of the public. I appreciate that. Um. And we, as a licensing authority, have to be very careful with the way we deal with things as well, because there there's there's always the challenge back from the business that we shouldn't be facilitating sort of people being allowed to review a licence or or call for a hearing. Um. We should be sort of even handed and neutral as much as possible in that process. And that, I think, as we're employed by the council, I think that might be that there's potentially feeling that that isn't the way it should be. But a lot of the reviews would would necessarily come through a responsible authority. So if there's crime and disorder is a cause of concern at premises, then we would normally expect the police to be the people that were looking to take a review. And if public safety is concerned, it could, it could be the fire service, it could also be the police. If we get underage sales and concerns about young people on the premises, trading standards and noise should come from the environmental pollution, environmental health pollution team. Um. And it gives weight that if they've decided there's a problem and it's their area of a sort of enforcement, that they are taking a review. Whereas a member of the public, it's um it's just more difficult, but it's still available, there's still a process to follow. And as long as it relates to the full licensing objectives and it's it's sort of relevant, um it's not been, we're not doing the same thing over and over again. We're not allowed to commit vexations, it can't be repetitious. So we we have to be very careful when we, when we get a request for a review that we've been entirely objective and deciding whether to go ahead. But I appreciate, is that all it's saying? By making it clear, explaining the way it should be done um and giving that guidance to people is part, part of something that will help them and and us ultimately.
Thank you. Thank you, Jo. I'm going to come to councillor Barrett in a minute. Can I just double down on that for a second though? So I think this is, this is one of the pieces of feedback I had from reading the policy actually. Because even as ward councillors, we're not consulted on licensing applications, which I presume we're just following national legislation for that, right? There's a list of consultees, fire, police, et cetera, and councillors don't come into that. I think one of the challenges we see is if a councillor, whether that's ward councillor or town councillor, wants to have a licence reviewed. I think if if the only thing we can legally do is to have an officer review that at the request of councillors and not a licensing subcommittee, and the licensing subcommittee only comes around as a result of, say, the police raising a complaint. Um. I think we should just probably be honest about that in the in the policy. It was just something I was struggling to, struggling to see. And if that's all we're able to do, that's all we're able to do, but we should just be transparent about that. That was was just my piece of feedback, but I appreciate you've already touched on that. I'm going to go to councillor Barrett.
Thank you. Um. Yes, I agree. I thought it was a very well constructed document. And I think it makes it very clear what people can and can't do. But really, my my comments were related to page thirty four, where we have strategic priorities. And it talks there about providing the environment for economic prosperity, where businesses can grow, innovation, enable people and so on. But there's very little of that in the document. So we don't seem to reference where those sorts of things are actually um there for businesses and others to actually achieve that. So if the strategic priorities are this, why isn't it in the document? Or why isn't it referenced in the document that they can do that? It shouldn't, the whole document reads enforcement rather than the things it says in the strategic priorities. That was the way I read it.
Thank you, councillor Barrett. Do you want to reply to that, Jo? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, that, well, that's, that's, that's interesting. Yes, thank you, councillor Barrett. I mean, I Yeah, that, well, that's, that's, that's interesting. Yes, thank you, councillor Barrett. I mean, I, I, yes, okay, that's, that's a good point. I think we were trying to, yeah, probably trying to redress the fact that, that there was, the information in there was, wasn't detailed enough and didn't give enough guidance to applicants. But obviously by providing that guidance, it, it's sort of putting them a lot of requirements on a business. So the focus has become, yeah, very much you need to do this, you need to think about that, you've considered that. If you're doing this, you've got to think that. And, yeah, so it probably takes, it takes, yeah, I can see how that, you could see that as a potential conflict. I suppose what I would argue is, is, is giving them the information to help them get it right. And if they get it right, then we basically, they, they can get on with it. I mean, that's the way the licensing works is it's, it's all about allowing businesses to do these things. So if we give them the constraints and explain what, what they need to consider and they do that, then we have hopefully successful businesses following the requirements of the, of the legislation. But, yeah, I take the point. Thank you. Thank you for raising that.
I think a lot of those showing through an appendix C, we've got two and a half page, three pages there of, you must do this, you must do that. And I know that would feature in every application. But there's that balance, isn't there, between wanting to encourage business whilst not making them do more than they need to?
Chair, do you mind if I just come back on the, the comment about, you know, you, you can't call for a review? Because that, I, sorry, I, I was just, I suppose, trying to explain that it, it, it's more, it's more tricky if you don't have the responsible authority, sort of, who's, who has sort of the interest in one of those four licensing objectives, sort of taking the review or supporting the review. But we certainly have had members of the public calling for reviews and bringing things to subcommittees and successfully getting changes to licences as a result. And, and it's also more than possible for the members of the public to ask their local councillor to represent them at a hearing and for the, you know, the councillor themselves to, to call for a, a review. So I don't think there's any, there's anything that prevents that. I'm just explaining that it's, when, when the arguments are had in the licence, sub- licensing subcommittee and people are saying that there's a lot of crime associated with the premises. If the police aren't there saying, yes, that's right, there is, then obviously that, that's part, you know, inevitably. Completions could be drawn. But, but as I say, I know that there have been, there have been very many reviews that have been successful in making changes to, changes to licences, where the grounds have been made by the, by the applicants.
I, I appreciate that. I think it's just understanding, even if we were to have a section in here that said, you know, review of licensing if, you know, who can complain on what grounds and then what those channels look like, just so that, you know, when we have complaints about this and all councillors do about various premises from time to time, we can say, go and look at section five of the policy. This says what, what you can complain about, what the, what the, what that path looks like. If the police were to do it, it'd probably be quicker. I, I think just being, I, I think that was something that I, I would like to see. But do, do we have any last comments from councillors? Does anyone want to make a proposal about, to anything that we'd like the Licensing Committee to consider based on our comments this evening? Go on, Hayley.
I'd like to propose that it's, the report is amended to set the expect, manage the expectations of, of the reader, including members of the public, and make it clearer how to challenge a licence and ask for a review in particular.
Thank you. Is that seconded by, by anybody? Yeah, we have a couple of seconds. Okay. Firstly, I think there's a lot of good stuff in here, by the way, Jo, and the reason we wanted to consider it is so that we could give a bit of a Biggleswade dimension on it. Are there any last comments? It's councillor Howe.
Yeah, just like to say, I'm on the licensing subcommittee and it was, it's really enjoyable, actually. There's so many things considered that you'd never even think of. And, and you have a really good conversation about it with all the different parties. Some go in there, of course, you're online and they go out this room, in this room and this one. And it's, and it's excellent. I really do enjoy it. So well done. Good work.
Good to know. Thank you for the feedback, councillor Howe.
Excellent. And they really do consider all sorts. There was one on the A1 near the Black Cat roundabout a couple of years ago, I think, that raised a few eyebrows. So I have to, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's a lot there that this policy has to cover and it isn't just rowdy nightclubs. There's, there's a, there's a broad range. So look, we have a proposal. It's been seconded. The proposal, Hayley, correct me, is to manage, for the, for the policy, to, to manage expectations around what those channels for review look like and what powers or, or what authority people, whether that's members of the public or councillors or statutory consultees, have to have a licence challenge. Is that a fair summary? Yes. Okay. All those in favour of that proposal, if we could just indicate, please? Any against? No, then that's carried. Thank you. We will, we will provide that feedback hopefully to the licensing committee. Obviously, you've, you've heard it now, Jo, but thank you ever so much for joining. It's much appreciated and, and good work with a, a very detailed policy. We're grateful for, for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. All the best. Thank you. Item fourteen, Joint Committee Work Plan Review for Members to Receive and Consider the Current Work Plan. Right, I'm moving on to about page five hundred of the deck. Yes, please do, Hayley. Go, go ahead.
So I think on October, we said about having, talking about our recommendations for the, for highways. So we need to add that in for October for sure. I think that's a key thing. That was my only thing.
That sequencing's really important, isn't it? Can we note that, please? Councillor Russell?
Yes, I agree on highways. We also apparently are having a representative of Salamanca coming on in October.
Yeah.
And we're having a representative of the Integrated Care Board in October. But the other thing that I don't want to get lost is we've been asking for at least three meetings now for somebody to come from the flood risk team at Central Beds to talk to us about where we are with flooding in, in this area. And we've, some of us seen the changes in the river levels, for instance, with the building that's been happening at Alsey and Shefford and its surface water runoff. And it has quite an effect. So can we sort out when the flood risk team can come? Because when we first asked, they were busy doing something obviously important. But, you know, there must be a chance to come, for somebody to come and talk to us, please. So highways, Salamanca, healthcare, flood risk, please.
And Ivalva, and Ival Valley, actually, because that's, so I think we're going to have to just prioritise some of these and focus on time contingent ones and perhaps some are better suited to a town council meeting potentially. Perhaps we could discuss this offline, but it is those five that need to come in some way, shape or form sooner rather than later. Gosh, I'm going to be busy, aren't I? Councillor Barrett?
Potentially. I mean, I just wanted to ask, we talked about the community review as well.
Yeah.
Is that something we might want to just come back to at that point? Because more would have happened regards to that.
What, possibly. Councillor Watkins, what are the timelines for the community governance review coming to Corporate Resources Committee at CBC? That's okay, sorry.
In August, I thought.
Pardon?
Just I thought.
No, there's still consultations to land, I think. Okay, we'll have a little bit of time. I suspect officers will want to opine over the feedback that comes before it goes to Corporate Resources. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, the second point was just a call for sites. Is that something we might want to just review at some point? We may at some stage want to prioritise some of these things, I think, to be able to get through in a normal meeting, but.
Yep, agreed. Boys, we're going to have to start at eight AM and we'll, we'll run late. Councillor Russell?
The call for sites and the community governance review, I think, should be with the January meeting because there's going to be a consultation starting in January after the planning team have assessed all the sites that have been put forward. So whether the consultation is published in time for the fifteenth of January, I don't know. But we can hope that, that that information will be available. And I don't know how the community governance review will fit in. But certainly there have been issues raised in Biggleswade Town Council about the timing of these two things because some of the decisions or possible decisions on boundary reviews really depend on whether some of the sites for development are going ahead or not. And so the two things really come together. So unless councillor Watkins can inform us in more detail and we need to bring things forward to October, I would suggest that call for sites and community governments are suggested or discussed at the same time.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense. Okay, so we have, I have a list of seven things here. But we also have an existing list of things that we might want to, don't know what there is to discuss on Land North anymore, other than how sad we all are. And, and potentially the King's Reach Open Spaces, I know, is featured on this agenda, but I don't suggest that Joint Committee discusses it until, unless there is actually something that Joint Committee can add to that conversation. So perhaps, perhaps as chairman and deputy chairman, I know I've only been here, I've only been chairing this meeting for an hour and a half and obviously didn't even have tonight's agenda in front of me. Perhaps we could just take an action offline, just to have a quick review of what's in here, sense check some of it, reset some of this agenda so that we can get these priorities in at the right time because some of them are very much time contingent, some it's probably better to wait a little bit. Other things perhaps are better discussed elsewhere. Is that okay? Yeah, is that all right? Right, that's item fourteen. But, yeah, sorry.
I'm just looking on the website in terms of the community governance review and it says feedback from, so there's going to be two consultations and this is phase one, considered at GP Committee on the twenty-third of October. And a further consultation on the resulting proposals for change will take place at the end of the year.
Okay, well. Yeah, okay. Well, we have, we have the community governance review. The timelines are the timelines as set by Central Beds. The town council's done a lot of very good work on this. The fact that we're not discussing it at a joint committee is not the end of the world, I think. So you, I presume town council will be making a proposal, a decision to submit to Central Beds. Is that in August? Is that coming to the August meeting?
The August meeting will have the proposal that council will decide on.
Okay, perfect. So I think, like, if any ward councillors are interested in what the town council has done, I think there's an opportunity to, to get in touch. We did obviously have the session at the Orchard Centre, which was very useful. I think a lot of the changes and the engagement with neighbouring parishes has probably been really interesting. So I would urge members to turn up to that August meeting for last representations. But it sounds like we're working to quite tight timelines now, yeah? Okay, I'm going to move on to item fifteen then. So we have a series of items for information. So item fifteen A, Bedfordshire, Luton and Milton Keynes Integrated Care Board Joint Committee attendance for, is that on our list? Yeah. For members to note that BLMK ICB will be attending at the next joint committee to provide members with an update on Biggleswade Health Centre at this meeting. I presume, do we, is there any comments on that? Councillor Whitaker?
I'm just wondering whether we, we might provide them with a, with a list of questions before they come, so we get something meaningful from them. Because the danger is they come and they say, well, everything is up in the air and everything's a bit changing and we can't really tell you very much. And I, I think that's not good enough. We need to have some concrete answers. So I wonder if we can agree. I think we, we can probably do it over email. But it's going to be, you know, how do we ensure Biggleswade stays, you know, a top priority? And, you know, how do we ensure that the healthcare needs that are currently not being met, get met? And all of those, and what's our role in that as well?
Yeah, I, I think that's a very good idea. Councillor Alban?
Yeah, I just want, given the state of flux that the ICB, given that there's a merger on, and which is, you were saying, was, there's a proceeding at pace, whether they would even be able to attend that meeting?
I hope so. Let's, let's, let's ask them to attend anyway. Perhaps I, as chairman, can take an action to email all town councillors and Central Bedfordshire councillors to ask questions. Come to me. I'll slim that list down and we'll pass it on via town council officers if, if that works. Councillor Russell?
Just to say that the ICB have been invited to the last two joint committees, the last one and this one, and have been unable. But they've confirmed to our office that they will be attending in October. So unless something unforeseen happens, I would expect them to keep to that. Because there's been a lot of communication with the ICB over attendance.
Okay, great. So it looks like they're coming. We'll get some questions in advance. So if we minute that as an action for me, if that's all right, please, like you and me. Any last comments on this? No, did we just note it? Yeah, thank you. Items for information then. So Christmas light switch on. So we are in discussion to ensure the electrical supply within certain lamp posts in the market square in High Street are working sufficiently to support the light switch on. Are there any comments on this? This is a partnership between CBC and BTC, obviously. Any comments on the light switch on? Okay, Ian, do you want to comment?
Yeah, there's, there's some progress going on with the surveying of the electrical ducting and the switchboards and such like at the moment. So that's current, that's good progress and it bodes well because it's that far down the, the times together that we should be in the clear for Christmas.
Excellent. Good. Councillor Russell? No? Okay, are we okay to note this? We look forward to seeing lots of lights. And am I right in thinking town council has gone out to tender on potentially a different, new lights this year? Is that right, just to note as well?
Yes, they've been out to tender and the contractor has been chosen.
Excellent. Okay, that sounds good. Item fifteen C, current and upcoming consultations. There are currently four live consultations. Full details and online questionnaires are available on our website. That'll be CBC's website. So community governance review, licensing policy, both of which we've spoken about, send strategy and local nature reserve strategy. So are we okay just to note this item? I think if the town council wants to comment on any of those, or if we as ward councillors can, we can do so in our individual capacity or the town council can come to a position on any of those, should it so wish. Is that all right? Are we okay to note this? Any comments? No? Perfect. Fifteen D, CBC Executive Forward Plan. So this is a forward plan with papers which came to the June executive. So this is the forward plan of key decisions at Central Beds Council. Do you want to have any comments on these? I think we've already referenced one of the items, which is the LC WHIPS, which is coming in maybe October to executive, something like that. Are there any comments on this forward plan? No? We note it? Okay, still on the licence.
Enough on our plates without looking for anything else at the moment.
Yeah.
Unless there's something urgent there that you can identify as ward councillors.
Can't even find the paper. That's all right. Is it not in here? Is there? Yeah, please go ahead.
Just the sustainable modes of trans, trans travel to school strategy. I don't think I've seen it, but I think it's coming on the fifth of August. And given we know that we all have problems with parking outside schools at school times, I think it might be one that we want to, we want to take a look at as ward members, but as a town council, you might want to take a look at as well.
Thank you. Okay, are we okay to note the CBC Executive Forward Plan? Yep. Item fifteen E, UK Shared Prosperity Funding. A brief note is attached, which provides an overview of the projects and schemes benefiting from UK SBF in twenty-five, twenty-six. We have various, so we have some notes here. I did actually look at them. I just can't find them in front of me. Town council's put in an application for various bits, I think, haven't we? Ian?
Yeah, if I can just talk you through that quickly. From this two sheet thing, conspicuous absence of Biggleswade from paragraph two, thirty thousand total funding went to Sandy Potton, Amptillan, Shefford. Well, you can't win them all. We did very well in the previous year. We missed out on the current year. Three hours ago, we put in an application at, within a six week timescale for next year's. I could go into details of why we didn't get the, the current years. I think that I would call it sophisticated. They would call it complicated. I would say it was a complex coalition. Um, I would say it was a complex coalition partnership. They would say it was messy. Um, and difficult to monitor. I think the uh, the the striking thing about the successful applications from Sandy Potton, Amptill and Shepherd was that they were simple and straightforward. They covered one or two topics and they were less ambitious and less expensive than than what I was bidding for, which was to bid, bid um, and build on the previous application. We did very, very well in the previous year. Um, we had a good and dynamic trusted relationship with CBC. We're flexible and imaginative and they let us get away with it. We did Century House toilets, we did, and are still working on the Abbot's Walk Palace Street corridor. We've got signs, uh, vintage and heritage to go up and um, information signs. We held the Wade Fest, which was um, an opportunity we were able to seize when something else couldn't be progressed. Uh, at the moment, the application which is going today is for the sports changing rooms and storage. Um, two years ago, we worked through CBC. The uh, unsuccessful application went through the Bedfordshire and Luton Community Foundation. And this six week mad dash this time has been again through CBC, which we are optimistic. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ian. Fingers crossed. Any comments on UK SPF? No? Okay, should uh, keep up the good work. Keep trying to get some money for Biggleswade. Um, you know, I I guess it's uh, probably not something for this committee so much, but certainly the town council to be thinking about, you know, year, a year in advance, what good, simple applications look like. And uh, it's great that you've learnt from some of those towns that have been successful in the past, but also what's worked for us in the past as well in Biggleswade. So thank you for your efforts there. Any last comments on UK SPF? Paul, councillor Howe, with your microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, as I say, I was back in the um, the beats for the football club and the cricket club. I just wondered if there's any more developments, but um, we can catch up after this if you want.
Let's take the football club and cricket club separately. I think this, this uh, bid was for uh, changing rooms uh, elsewhere in the, elsewhere in the town.
Yeah.
Um, so uh, that was this bid, the separate conversation about that. But I think officers would be happy to have that conversation privately.
Just like an update.
No, that's fine. We'll deal with that separately if that's okay, please.
Just to say that um, this is probably the end of UK SPF, this uh, very condensed six week process. Um, I think the, I was going to say the new government, but it's not exactly new now, is it? They will, UK SPF is a legacy programme and I think they'll invent something else for next year.
Lovely. Same thing, but with a different name. I wonder how much the rebranding, rebranding would probably pay for the um, facilities we're looking to. Um, I'll stop talking. Right. Um, thank you. Thank you for that update and we look forward uh, to getting some of the whatever new scheme is called next year. Um, right. That ends our public, that ends our uh, this evening's meeting from an open session point of view. Uh, we have a couple of items to discuss under exempt. So if we're, I I presume we're comfortable going into exempt session? Is there any dissent over moving into exempt? Please.
We didn't have a public session at the end.
We didn't have a public session at the end, did we? But I I didn't write this agenda. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just the messenger. But occasionally, being in the chair, I was going to say with a gavel, but clearly I'm, no, we'll work on that next time as well. Um, chairman's discretion, uh, you know, we have two esteemed councillors who have sat there very patiently. Do you wish to say anything, councillor Strong? Did you? Um, I don't know what the updates are actually. So um, I think I'm happy for you to stay if other members are. Is, is, is there any dissent with the two town councillors at the back staying for this session? No, I don't think so. Yeah, you're welcome to stay, councillor Strong and councillor Agnew. You're most welcome. Come take a seat at the table. Um, but if we could